First, twenty twenty two, then it was extended to July fifteenth, twenty twenty two. And then it was extended again until March thirty first, twenty twenty three. And you're hoping that the new governor will send it again. That's why we could have remote normally would have to be all here in person. And well, people can tell you already know that. You are hereby given notice that the members of the Brockton Housing Authority are called to meet in special session on Friday, February twenty fourth, twenty twenty three at two P M. In the mayor Bill Carpenter Executive Boardroom, Manning Towers, forty five Garden Road, first floor, Brockton Mass, oh two, three, oh one. This meeting slash hearing of the Brockton Housing Authority will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance in our participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting or hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for the in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. The public is invited to view and or listen to the meeting via phone, computer, laptop, or tablet. To do so, download the Zoom Cloud Meeting App in any app store or at W W W dot zoom dot U S. At two o'clock P M on Friday, the twenty fourth, twenty twenty twenty, twenty twenty three, click on and join the meeting and enter meeting I D number eight, two, four, one, zero, nine, two, nine, nine, three, seven, passcode zero, eight, two, zero, four, six. Or use the link H T T P double dot, double slash zoom dot U S slash I forward slash eight, two, four, one, zero, nine, two, nine, nine, three, zero, three, seven. You may also join by calling the conference line at one, six, four, six, five, five, eight, eight, six, five, six, at two P M on Friday, the twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. And enter meeting I D eight, two, four, one, zero, nine, two, nine, nine, three, seven, passcode zero, eight, two, zero, four, six, followed by the pound sign. The board chair will instruct participants on the appropriate time and manner for public comment during the meeting. If we can all please rise and remove your hats if possible. For the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. The republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Item one, roll call. Mister Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Here.
Commissioner Travis.
Here.
Commissioner Pedefin.
Here.
Mister Chairman.
Here. Item two. This is gonna be tough, because you three are on the TV. And I'm here by myself.
But but we're here with you.
And some friends, and some friends. Item two. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January twenty sixth, twenty twenty three, item A in your packets.
Members of the board, I've had a chance to review the minutes. I have found them to be in order, and I would recommend that they be approved as written.
So move.
Seconds.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Ernest Pedefin, seconded by Commissioner Janet Travis. Motion is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January twenty sixth, twenty twenty three, as presented and written. Any questions or discussions on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mister Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Travis.
Yes.
Commissioner Pedefin.
Yes.
Mister Chairman.
Yeah. Motion carries unanimously. Item three, hearing of visitors. Any member of the public is invited to speak for the board. Visitors wishing to be heard must sign in with name, address, and contact number before the start of each meeting. Each visitor visitor will be allowed three minutes to speak on each subject. The board will take any issues under advisement and respond at a later date. Total time for hearing of visitors will be limited to fifteen minutes, which will be strictly enforced. There will be no passing of your three minutes of time to another. All visitors can be heard on the agenda items only. Are there any hearing of visitors, visitor?
Mister Chairman, and nobody has signed in here, and I don't see anybody on the Zoom call that to be heard. Yeah, Camille is simply watching and meeting.
What do we need a motion? Nothing for that. There are no hearing of visitors. Item four, correspondence, Mister Tebow.
Uh, there's one piece of correspondence in your packet. It's a letter that was written on behalf of the authority to um the Congressman Stephen Lynch. Uh, we are engaging his office for assistance with our project at the Campello High Rise. I have had the opportunity to meet with uh his district representative. We have had a a nice phone call and started the dialogue. Um, hopefully we'll be able to get something in the two thousand twenty four appropriations for the project. But I did want the uh the board members to know, I know in in your travels, especially you, uh Chairman, you might come into contact with the Congressman, and I wanted to make sure you saw what was written to him.
Do that to you all?
Do you have a check?
They did, for eleven nine eleven and a half million dollars. I gave to the city. But he mentioned how, I don't know if some of that was given.
No, I I not that I know of. Usually they let us know if the money's coming directly to us, but we will be working with his office. He is uh uh he understands the um magnitude of the uh low-income housing issue in the state of Massachusetts.
He was pretty firm. And I know the mayor doesn't much. There any other correspondence?
That that is it, sorry.
Any questions on the correspondence? We have the one letter from the two Congressman Lynch. Hearing none, item five, approval of the bills of the special meeting of February twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. Commissioner Roberts.
Uh, yes, my 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 internet's breaking up over here. Okay, um, I reviewed the bills with Tom. There were a couple that were resolved. Um, so everything looked very well, so um I move to approve the bills for the special meeting of February twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, as presented. Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Travis, motion is to approve the bill as written and presented for the special meeting of February twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Carol, you got cameras?
Yeah, I know. It's my internet connection.
Yeah, something. There it is. You're working now. Hearing none, roll call, Mister Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Travis.
Yes.
Commissioner Pedefin.
Yes.
Mister Chairman.
Yeah. Motion carries unanimously. Item six. Memorandum to the board regarding maintenance response, February fourth, twenty twenty three, exhibit C in your packet, Mister Tebow.
I want to inform the board um of really a historic event um uh the weekend of February fourth. Um, I was in constant contact with the chairman here regarding calls that were coming in. Uh, we usually get about thirty-eight calls in a week. We got a hundred and seventy-two calls in about twenty-four hours. Um, the uh maintenance uh uh department usually has one person on call. Um, uh, we put it all call out, Abidie DeChristopher, who was out, by the way, uh, working uh alongside all of his men, uh, went out to make sure that the people had the heat uh that they needed and and the hot water that they needed. Um, and basically worked around the clock. Um, as uh we spoke about at the resident advisory board meeting earlier this week, uh, the residents were were very good, but there were troubles calling at times because of phone systems were overwhelmed. And I I just wanted the board to be able to recognize the 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 work and the dedication and the above and beyond. They left their nice warm houses to go out and work for uh twenty-four hours in some freezing conditions.
And I have talked to Tom about this, these because we need these guys. We need these guys to come in on snowy days or cold days, and as you know, that day was the coldest, it was minus eighteen degrees. It was the coldest day we've ever seen in the state. And I was just thankful that these guys came in to do the hundred seventy-two calls. You can't have people in the high-rise cold or no heat. So I said to Tom, we should get him a gift card. And he said, yeah, that's a good idea. It should be at the uh with the Italian Kitchen?
Italian Kitchen is someplace they usually go, yeah.
So quite a few of the guys go to the Italian Kitchen for lunch. So we thought, well, let's get gift cards for Italian Kitchen. We don't know if they even have them, but if they do, we'll get them there. And I was taking like fifty dollars a piece. The wife had to stay home by herself while the husband was working, or the other way around. So there's two people involved. And we, I need somebody of you three to make the motion to get the fifty-dollar gift cards from Italian Kitchen. There's only ten people involved.
Could I read their names, Mister Chairman?
Yeah. Tom is gonna read the name. I think there's ten.
I believe you, I believe you're you're correct. It would be uh Mister Carlos Chica, Mister Steve Chetwin, Mister Joe Kukla, Mister Axel Ligazado, Mister Ruben Bullock, Mister Dan Smith, Mister Mike Zioli, Mister Tom Carbonara, and Mister Mike Bometri. And if I could uh take one, uh, I would also include Mister uh DeChristopher, who spent his time out there. And as you know, he's no longer an hourly man. He is a salaryman, so he doesn't get paid any extra for going out.
You don't get paid extra for that? The gift card. We need a motion for the, to get the gift cards for the guy, from somebody.
I make a motion to get gift cards for, I guess, just the guys, no women, um, at the Italian Kitchen for going above and beyond on the coldest day ever. Maybe not ever, but anyhow.
Janet Field.
I'm sorry?
You had the fifty-dollar fee, you going?
Fifty dollars, yes.
Has been made by Commissioner Janet Travis, seconded by Commissioner Carol Roberts. The motion is to buy I don't, does he make eleven now?
Ten or eleven, yeah.
Hang on a second, we're counting.
Ten.
And twenty?
Yeah, eleven, we'll call it eleven.
Well, eleven, it's eleven gift cards.
Yeah.
Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mister Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Travis.
Yes.
Commissioner Pedefin.
Yes.
And Mister Chairman.
Yeah. Motion carries unanimously. I just want to say that I went out for no heat call myself or a friend. I'm not looking for a gift card. But I was part of that as well. It was just shutting the window and door. Had the rain stop. Oh, yeah, yeah. I didn't work on the boiler or anything. It just shut the window. Somebody opened the window on the coldest day, eighteen below zero. Item uh seven, approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-two year-end financial statement, exhibit D in your packet. Mister Tebow.
This is uh an item that comes up once a year, and it was the result of what happened in Chelsea back in two thousand twelve. Um, and what it's saying is that the board, uh, you're you're certifying to a couple of things. One is that we give you the financial records, which we do each uh month, the comparatives, we answer any questions. We also review with the treasurer all the bills. We give all the bills to the treasurer. We give the payroll registry to the the board on a regular basis. Um, it also is the uh certifying that we uh notify people of the status of lead paint in their apartment, and there's three choices that we have. Uh, one is that we know of uh lead paint in the apartment. Second is that we don't know of lead paint in the apartment, and third is it's been de-letted. So in our family developments, they've all been de-letted, and the elderly developments, we've never tested because there's no children under six living there, uh, at least not on the lease. Um, and so therefore, we um notify the residents and we have them sign a form that goes into their file. It's a a blue form. Um, so I do recommend that um and you are saying that the uh this financial forms are true and accurate as far as you know. And the the reason that you know that is you you can ask questions, as Pearl did of me um on Tuesday, and I went and looked up two bills for her, exactly what they were. You do get your financials. You do, you have hired a CFO, an executive director. Our accountant is down there working on the books now. They're audited by uh an auditor that you've uh hired, so you you can say as far as you know, you take your due diligence to uh make sure that uh year-end financials are in proper shape. I would recommend that they be they be approved.
We need a motion and a second on that item. Carol Beecher, ready?
Yeah.
You want to be second, Carol?
Second it.
Okay, Bernie, I got you as first. Carol, second. A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Ernest Pedefin. Motion is to approve the certificate of completion with five no, with notification procedures for federal and state lead paint laws. The top five compensation form, and on behalf of the Brockton Housing Authority, we certify under pains and penalties of perjury that the facts and information provided in attached year-end financial statements and tenant account receivables application data for the following programs, four hundred dash one, six eighty-nine dash one, six eighty-nine dash two, and M R V P for fiscal year ending twelfth, thirty-one, twenty-two. Uh, true, correct, and complete to the best of our knowledge, and that the statements fairly and accurately represent the financial condition of the developments in the Brockton Housing Authority for this period. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call to the table.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Travis.
Yes.
Commissioner Pedefin.
Yes.
And Mister Chairman.
Yeah. Motion carries unanimously. Item eight. Award of contract procurement of appliances, exhibit E in your packet. Mister Tebow.
If I could ask Mister DeChristopher to speak on this, please?
This award requires us to procure various size refrigerators and cooking ranges to replace the old malfunction units. During the week of December twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two, the Brockton Housing Authority advertised the procurement of appliances in the newspaper, public notice section. Public office also advertised in the Commonwealth, Massachusetts, Food and Service in Fulton, Convis and Convis. During the same period, the business opportunities posted in the mail, main bulletin board at forty-five Garden Road. The bid document was posted on the authority's website, containing containing a copy of the bid document to the public to download. Equally important and effective for the diffusion of this service was the email invitation sent to five vendors listed in the in the procurement department database. One of the companies invited to bid was Brockton. January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, the submission deadline, you receive three responses. G E Appliances of Louisville, Kentucky submitted a responsive and responsible bid. C C Richards and Son of Bonning Bonnington, New York submitted a non-responsive, non-responsive bid bid. George Washington Tom of Brockton also responded with a non-responsive and non-responsive bid. The company could not guarantee prices beyond one year due to the price of all failure of buying materials. D H A has been conducting business with this company satisfactorily for many years. References were checked and proved very positive of this responsive and responsible bid. G E G E Appliances in New York. We consulted the federal website, S M dot gov to make sure that the company was not fired or not visited by the federal government. And we recommend a motion be made to uh award this a one-year contract to G E Appliances for the unit prices indicated in the company's price sheet.
We need a motion and a second, item A.
So moved.
The second it.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Travis, seconded by Commissioner Ernest Pedefin. Motion is to recommend to this board a motion to award a one-year supplier contract to hire G E Appliances for the unit prices indicated in the company's price sheet. I'm just adding that the only bid goes below this, as well.
It it was the lowest bid, uh, even when the numbers were there, because they were disqualified by by a couple hundred dollars per unit.
So it, this is the little bit, by the way.
Isn't it in um Kentucky?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Louisville.
Because we have here higher G I Appliances of New York.
It should be of Kentucky.
No, it's Louisville, Kentucky. I got Kentucky on mine. That's uh, I think it's on the summary of agenda items, if I can take a look.
Oh, it's Kentucky.
No, it says Kentucky, Janet.
The first, uh, and then on the second page, it says um references were checked and proved very positive of this responsive and responsible bid or higher.
Oh, yeah.
G I G E Appliances of New York.
It does say New York. Yep, there you go. It it is Kentucky.
Okay.
Would you change uh to Kentucky, Janet?
I'll change it.
It's Louisville, Kentucky.
Okay. Louisville?
Yeah.
Kentucky, okay. All right. That's pretty sad. We have to go to Louisville, Kentucky to get it.
Yeah. That's that, that's their corporate, uh, where they come out of corporate. They're actually everywhere. Um, G E is an international uh firm, and we've been buying their stoves and refrigerators for as long as I've been here. Uh, we did go out and test the market and found out, again, even though the others were disqualified, they were substantially more expensive. This is a a niche that G E has uh found itself uh for institutional provision of refrigerators and so.
Any other questions or discussions? Roll call, Mister Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Pedefin.
Yes.
Commissioner Travis.
Yes.
And Mister Chairman.
Yeah. Motion carries unanimously. Item nine, award of contract paper and plastics and janitorial supplies exhibited after the packet.
If I could ask Mister DeChristopher to speak on this, please?
This contract award requests for paper and plastics, janitorial supplies. During the week of January ninth, two thousand twenty-two, the Brockton Housing Authority advertised the supplies for janitorial paper and plastic products, such as paper towels, foil paper, and different sized plastic trash mowers. A pre-bid meeting was held on January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three to address questions from vendors and to clarify some of the big requirements. Bids were advertised in Central Register, Convis, and Convis, the Manning Tower Public Bulletin Board, and local, the local enterprise newspaper. Thirteen companies received bid packs by email invitations. The bid was open on January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Six companies responded with prices. Two companies provided the lowest price and proved to be responsible and responsive bids. One company, Central Polly Bag Corp of London, New Jersey, was a low bidder for the vast majority of the plastic products. The second company, O D P Business Solutions LLC of Boca Raton, Florida, was a low bidder for almost all of the paper products. I recommend a motion be made to award a contract for paper and plastic janitorial supplies to Central Polly Bag Corp of London, New Jersey, and O D P Business Solutions LLC of Boca Raton, Florida.
Everybody is saying that there's two companies involved. Need a motion? In a second.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Travis, seconded by Commissioner Carol Roberts. Motion is to award a contract for paper and plastics, janitorial supplies to Central Polly Bag Corporation of London, New Jersey, which I might add as a little bid. And the second part of it, to O D P Business Solutions LLC of Boca Raton, Florida, for all the paper products. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mister Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Pedefin.
Yes.
Commissioner Travis.
Yes.
Mister Chairman.
Yeah. Motion carries unanimously. Too bad they couldn't bid on both of them, one of them. That's a little different, I think.
It is different, yeah.
Item ten. Award of contract fire sprinkler maintenance and repair, exhibit junior packet, Mister Tebow.
Um, so uh I just wanted to let you know, Mister Barry is not here. Uh, we on the right one? I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen. I'm sorry. Before I, before I turn this over to Mister DeChristopher, as you may know, we're doing a lot of uh uh contract and procurement. We brought on Mister Peddula as the director of procurement to bring us into compliance with the rules. So you'll see quite a few of these. Once they're up and going, uh, it will slow down a little bit. So we were, we were a little late on some of these procurements, so he's getting them all for the housing authorities in uh compliance. Mister Christopher, you could speak on this item?
This contract is for fire sprinkler maintenance and repair service. Between December nineteenth and December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, the Brockton Housing Authority advertised for qualified fire sprinkler maintenance and repair vendors in Convis, the State Food and Service Board, and and the local enterprise newspaper. This business opportunity was posted in the Manning Building Lobby, also in the Manning Building Lobby. Forty-four vendors were invited by email to respond to the bid. The solicitation was posted on the D H A website for the public to review and download. A pre-bid meeting was held on January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, in the Rapt Conference Conference Room. Two companies attended a pre-bid meeting when we discussed the technical and administrative requirements of the service. On January thirty-first, thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, submission deadline, we received two bids as shown in the attached bid calendar sheet. The low and responsive bid low and responsible bid was Davis Alma Sprinkler Company, D B A, whose business as Cargill, Cargill Sprinkler Incorporated. The references were checked, including the vendor exclusion page exclusion page of the federal government, S M dot gov. No negative reference received from this company was the mass. I recommend a motion be made to award the contract for fire sprinkler maintenance and repairs for three years to Davis Alma Sprinkler Company, whose business as Cargill Sprinkler Incorporated, for a base unit price of twenty-one thousand, three hundred dollars and emergency hourly rate of a hundred ninety-six dollars an hour.
Need a motion and a second, item ten.
So moved. Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Travis. Motion is to award a three-year contract for fire sprinkler maintenance and repairs to David Alma Sprinkler Company, D B A Cargill Sprinkler Incorporated for a base unit price of twenty-one thousand, three hundred dollars and the emergency hourly rate of a hundred ninety-six dollars as presented. Just a reminder, it is the low bid. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mister Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Pedefin.
Yes.
Commissioner Travis.
Yes.
And Mister Chairman.
Yeah. Motion carries unanimously. Item eleven. Award of contract, second floor balcony repairs, Rainbow Terrace Project six, six, seven dash one A exhibitation in your package. Mister Tebow.
Um, I, as I started to say last time, uh, Mister Barry is at a meeting with our architects and engineers uh regarding the Campello project. Actually, I was there. It's been a he's into his fifth hour at that meeting. So Nancy Macedo is here from the capital improvements department to assist, but these are some. I feel important things and I understand them well. This is the award of contract to repair the balconies at the Rainbow Terrace. This is an emergency situation that we notified the state of in two thousand seventeen. But as you can see, it didn't move through the system very quickly. We advertised on October twenty-sixth. It went through the D K M certified contractor general business list. The budget was five hundred nine thousand, which we thought was low. In the end, after the bid opening, the H C D capital improvements and the authority architect. That evaluated the bids, received the completeness, additional reference checks were conducted on M C I contracting, the low bidder. After the bid was reviewed, references checked and completed. M C I contracting of twelve ninety-six Washington Street was deemed to be responsive and responsible with a low bid of seven hundred seventeen thousand, one hundred sixty-six dollars. As I said, this is very important. If you know how Kennedy Drive and Rainbow Terrace are set up, they have these balconies on the second floor. They are starting to fail. They're cracking and we need to shore them up to make sure that nobody gets hurt. So we're quite excited to be able to get this pocket moving and I would recommend that the contract be awarded. Yes, yes.
We need a motion and a second on that item?
I move.
Item eleven.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Ernest Pettifat, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion to water contract in the amount of seven hundred seventy-one hundred sixty-six dollars. To M T I contracting incorporated of Stone Mass. For the second floor balcony repairs at Rainbow Terrace Project six-six-seven dash one A. And I might add it is the low bid. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call to the people?
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Just saying hi, Jake. I see you snuck in.
Hello. Hi, everybody.
Jake's from the mayor's office. He's with us now.
Yes, just wanted to join you guys for these these momentous awards.
Yep, you're welcome. Item twelve, award of contract, common entry door assembly replacement, Rainbow Terrace Project six-six-seven dash one A. And Kennedy Drive Project six-six-seven dash two, exhibit I in the package. Mr. Tebow?
This has to do with the lobbies at Kennedy Drive and Rainbow Terrace. When you go in there, big plate glass windows there that are true plate glass from the late fifties. That are dangerous when they break. We're also going to be replacing the door systems there, which are important to the security of our residents. This is being funded through our funds, through our capital funds and our funds. But I would like to make sure that when we we make the recommendation that it says contingent upon funding from D H C D. We are going back and forth because so many contractors are coming in higher across the state. They are having to decide when to fund things. So for the public, on December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. We solicited bids from D K M certified contractors for doors and windows. The common entry doors, assembly replacement at Rainbow Terrace and Kennedy Drive. With a construction budget of a little over a million dollars. It's to replace ninety-two entrances. On January twenty-fourth, a public online bid opening was held and one bid was received in the amount of one million, three hundred seventy-three thousand, three hundred dollars. After the bid opening, the authority architect evaluated the bid, received the completeness. Additionally, reference checks were conducted on Barica Construction, who was the apparent low bidder. We've done quite a bit of business with Barica. They've been one of our better contractors on the state side, to be quite honest, but on the federal side also. After the bid review, a reference check, references were checked. Completed Barica Construction of two nineteen Walnut Street, West Bridgewater was deemed to be responsive and responsible. With a low bid in the amount of one million, three hundred seventy-three thousand, three hundred dollars, which I would recommend that the. Board approve contingent on D H C D funding.
We need a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Ernest Pettifat, seconded by Commissioner Cal Roberts. Motion is to award a contract in the amount of one million, three hundred seventy-three thousand, three hundred dollars. To Barica Construction Incorporated of West Bridgewater, Mass. For the common entry door assembly replacement at Rainbow Terrace Project six-six-seven dash one A. And Kennedy Drive Project six-six-seven dash two. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Tom, I just wanted to add that. What's the last thing you said?
Contingent upon D H C D funding.
So this is contingent, if we can get the funding. If we can't get it, we can't put the bid out again. We'll have to do it again. Any discussion or question? Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item thirteen. Approval of contract extension for biohazards cleanup, removal and restoration services. Exhibit A in your package.
If I could ask Mr. Christopher to speak on this, please?
This is a request for your approval of the extension of the New England Trauma Services for a period of two years. Beginning April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, ending April twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. The counter contract of the company expires April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. The company indicated by email the interest in the contract extension with the D H A by maintaining prices, terms and conditions. Same as two thousand, as the two thousand twenty contract. The benefits of this, the company will be working with the D H A for many years, is familiar with the value of these properties and tenants' populations. There's no barrier incurred by the company's personnel and the D H A staff, therefore, emergency responses take place with great efficiency. The H A keeps on working with the known good for. If the B H A continues working with good performance, maintenance, and is very happy with the company's past performance. The company is quick to respond and delivers quality work. The contract extension guarantees the B H A continuation of our fixed price set at three years. And continuing two more years. In essence, the D H A will be paying for the service at the same rate of two thousand twenty rate. Thus beating inflation escalation. For a total of five years, at the very minimum, the price freeze, price freeze will produce savings equal to the median projection for the core inflation. In two thousand twenty-three to three and a half percent. The same inflation rate is expected in two thousand twenty-four, therefore. For just the twenty, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four years, B H A will pay seven percent less than what we paid for in the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-two days. I recommend a motion be made to extend. To New England Trauma Services LLC. Contract in two more years, beginning April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, ending April twelfth, two thousand twenty. Two thousand twenty-five, for the same terms and conditions of the April first, two thousand twenty contract.
We need a motion and a second? Item thirteen?
So moved.
You got it, Ernie.
Okay.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trask. Seconded by Commissioner Ernest Pettifat. Motion is to approve a two-year extension for biohazards cleanup. Removal and restoration services to the contract with the New England Trauma Services LLC. Beginning April fourteen, two thousand twenty-three, and ending April twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. For the same terms and conditions of the April first, two thousand twenty contract. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item fourteen.
I've never heard of trauma services for plumbing.
No, please, I just noticed that disregard the plumbing. It's trauma services. They used, they were all known previous to that as. Twenty-four restore. We use them for biohazards. Mold, cleaning up mold. We've used them quite a bit over the, over the years.
But the term trauma sounds weird.
They originally started out, and they still do, if there is a. Emergency, they will clean it up. If there's a, so it's.
Nobody wants to do that. Did we do the roll call?
Yes, we did, sir.
Item fourteen. Approval of change order number one, comprehensive window replacement, Ann L Ward House Project six-six-seven dash five. Exhibit A in your package.
So the next three items, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen, have to do with the closing out of the window replacement. Job at the Ann Wood Congregate House at six twenty-nine North Main Street. The first one is for a no-cost extension. The second one is to say that they were substantially complete. And the third one is to say they were complete. We need to take one at a time because of the way the state requires us to close out jobs. The first one is a one hundred forty-two day calendar time extension. That's due almost exclusively to the amount of time it took to get the windows. The company that was providing them had great difficulty in providing the number we wanted, but they did. It was not the fault of the contractor and therefore I would recommend that it be approved.
We need a motion and a second item fifteen?
So move.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Ernest Pettifat, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is to approve the certificate of substantial completion to the contract with C V C insulation of Beverly Mass. For the comprehensive window replacement at Ann L Ward House Project six-six-seven dash five. Effective set, effective November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Any questions or discussion on the motion? It's just one. Mr. Tebow, this November seventeen twenty. Is that when the bid came out?
That's when they substantially completed the job. And so we, we giving them the extension to that period. They should have been done a hundred forty-two days earlier than that.
Okay. Any other questions? Item fifteen or discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Roberts, I see that you're on mute.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat?
Yes.
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. The motion carries unanimously. Item sixteen. Approval of certificate of final completion, comprehensive window replacement, Ann L Ward House Project six-six-seven dash five. Exhibit M in your package.
This is the L, the one part that, Mr. Chairman, the substantial completion. On the, yeah, substantial completion. We just approved the change order, then we have substantial completion, then we have final completion. And the state requires we take the three loads. Yes, sir?
You mean I missed something?
Yes. That's number fifteen.
Fifteen.
Did you say substantial completion?
Yes.
I apologize. You said exhibit L, that's why I, it's exhibit L.
You don't like it. Exhibit N is the next one.
Right, okay.
Yeah. We're in L.
All right.
Any questions or discussion? Item fifteen. Exhibit L in your package.
No.
Oh.
A second?
Oh, second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Ernest Pettifat, seconded by Commissioner Cal Roberts. Motion is to approve the certificate of substantial completion to the contract with C V C insulation. Of Beverly Mass for the comprehensive window replacement at Ann L Ward House. Project six-six-seven dash five, effective November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item sixteen. Approval of certificate of final completion, comprehensive window replacement, Ann L Ward House Project six-six-seven dash five. Exhibit M in your package.
This is the final part of the job where we say it's over. It is. All the punch work has been done. So the work is completed and the board closes us, so we can close the job with the department housing and community development.
Need a motion and a second item sixteen?
So moved. Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion to approve the certificate of final completion to the contract with C V C insulation of Beverly Mass. For the comprehensive window replacement at Ann L Ward House Project six-six-seven dash five. Effective November seventeen, two thousand twenty-two. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item seventeen. Executive Director's Report, Exhibit N in your package. Mr. Tebow?
So I'll just highlight a couple of the things that I've put into my report. Vacancies were down at the end of the year, January and February, they have skyrocketed. So we are, we are addressing those, but along with those vacancies comes quite a bit of cost. And the cost on our state program is significant because of the lack of adequate funding. We will be negotiating with the state to see if we can get some vacancy preparation money. We need about two hundred eighty thousand dollars to make sure that our reserves are in good stead. And so I want the board to know about that. The annual meeting, we are looking to have it in June. I'd like the board's opinion on, I was thinking Friday, we usually do it on a Friday, June twenty-third. Regular meeting would be on the twenty-second. I know we did it the same day last time, but that that presents some logistics that I think. Difficult, yeah. So if the board is okay with that, I'll work with Susan to see if that date is available. Is there any objections to June twenty-third?
Any objections to June twenty-third annual meeting?
Oh, not on mine.
Okay, that's, that's great. As I said, we're working on that. As I said earlier, we, there's a meeting going on now. We got in the Campello. Project, it's, it's a lot of work, spending quite a bit of time on that, but. I think you're going to be very, very impressed with the proposed project as we move along with it. We, Pest Control Company is doing, we, regular meetings with our residents. They were over at Sullivan, no, they were at Campello yesterday. Had a great turnout there. We have started the vibrancy project. The vibrancy project is being done by our asset managers. And our service coordinators, which we will be engaging the residents. I know Carol, I believe they have set up a time to come. And meet with the resident advisory board. And what we're looking to do there is reengage our residents. Once COVID happened. Quite a few people went into lockdown. And they have not come out, and this is not healthy for them at all. And so we'd like to reengage Carol Roberts and her group over at Kathy Towers. Had a Black History Month celebration last Saturday, last Saturday, Saturday, last Saturday?
Saturday before last.
Saturday before last. That was fabulous, well-attended, lots of smiles, lots of music, tons of food. But, and I know they're having one, I believe. Um, but we, and I know they're having one, I believe, the sad uh tomorrow at Bel Air High Rise, they have a speaker coming over. So it, we, again, this, this is uh important for the overall health of our uh residents. Which um a- and the, the vibrancy of life there. Um, other than that, I, I won't go over the capital projects uh in there, we are moving along with our security cameras. They're getting ready to do the uh, the work at camp uh at Hillside Village and then Rainbow Terrace, and then we'll move on from there.
So congratulations, Carol, because you do so much for your residents, and you've been having this program how many years?
Um, fourteen years for the Black History Month.
And that you've been spearheading, correct?
No, that's, I'm, that's one of the tenants, I help her, I support her, Henrietta Barrett.
Good for you guys.
Yeah, she, she runs that and the tenant association just backs her up and we make sure we can get the people in there that she needs.
Good.
Car- Carol does a wonderful job, and Henrietta has a, a vibrancy of her own.
Yeah.
There's a lot of energy. Wonderful woman.
Yeah, she does.
Before, before we take a motion on this, just to add that the annual meeting is the twenty-third.
Right.
The regular meeting is the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
It's the day before.
Right.
So two days that month.
You get a free lunch one day.
Bring your own the next.
Yeah.
We need a motion and a second, we're just gonna put that on file. From anybody?
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner uh Janet Trask. Motion is to accept the executive director report for February twenty-four twenty twenty-three and put on file. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
Um, just, just one question, the self-sufficiency program grant, is that more money than we've had before?
No, it's, it is more money than we had two years ago, but they significantly increased the money for that program last year. Um, because they recognize how important it is not only to provide housing, but a step up for people.
Any other questions or discussion? Item seventeen. Aaron Dunn, roll call Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat?
Yes.
And Mister Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item eighteen, award of contract, community building renovations Kennedy Drive, project six six seven dash two. Exhibit O in your packet. Mister Tebow?
You know, a couple of things, I want to make sure that I mention Nancy Macedo today, she'll get mad if she doesn't, doesn't, isn't able to speak at all. So this is a, a project that uh Commissioner Trask and I first heard about when we went to the Marriott and Quincy for a mass narrow um uh event, and the HCD spoke about this grant. We applied for it, we put quite a bit of work into it, and we were awarded the funds. And then it languished in a D H C D for years. Um, it's been, it's been extremely frustrating. Um, you know, through the work of the Capital Improvement Department with Nancy Macedo working with the HCD and Chris Barry pushing them and, and myself getting involved, we're finally to this point. But things that today are a lot more expensive than they were in two thousand nineteen when we started this. Um, so uh, the, the, obviously the, the bids are higher than they, we originally uh expected. But we're moving forward, we've told the HCD um that we believe this is an extremely important project for the Kennedy Drive complex. Um, so we, we put it out the bid on the twenty-eighth of December, um, we got the bids in on Valentine's Day. Um, a, after a bid review and reference checks were completed, we're a recap construction, this is the second one today of two nineteen Wall Street, that Wall, Wall Street, Suite B, West Bridgewater, was deemed to be the responsive and responsible low bidder. Um, we, as I said, we've done quite a bit of work, they came in at one million two hundred twenty-two thousand three hundred dollars. The second came in at one million six hundred forty-three thousand seven hundred eleven. So again, we recommend it be awarded to Barica um in the amount of one million two hundred twenty-two thousand three hundred dollars contingent upon D H C D funding. Yes, I, we, we have told the HCD that um we believe that this is on them.
Okay.
And that they need to pay the difference. Uh, they uh have asked for additional information, I have provided them with uh a myriad of emails that showed us begging them to take action.
Yeah. It's just the first time.
Yeah.
It wasn't before.
No, no, this was, I asked that Mister Barry put this in. Um, and um, we are, we do have a good relationship with Barica, um, and they understand that uh working with the state can at times be um difficult.
We need a motion and a second, item eighteen, from anybody?
So moved.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trask, seconded by Commissioner Ernest Pettifat. Motion to award a contract in the amount of one million two hundred twenty-two thousand three hundred dollars contingent upon D H C D funding to Barica Construction Incorporated of Westbridge Automatt. For the community building renovations at Kennedy Drive. Project six six seven dash two, any questions or discussion on the motion? Aaron Dunn, roll call Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat?
Yes.
And Mister Chairman?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Item nineteen. Appointment of maintenance mechanic aid, exhibit P in your packet.
Mister Tebow, um, if I could ask Mister uh um Christopher to speak on it, and I do want to uh point out that the uh recommendation speaks of a Richard's plane, it's Daniel's plane, Daniel.
Daniel.
Finally.
So, in October of two thousand twenty-two, the Brockton Housing Authority advertised with Indeed. Posted on the mass narrow website, fill vacant positions of maintenance mechanic aid. We hired one mechanic aid in two thousand twenty-two, but they remained open positions. This posting indicated that, that the position was to remain open until filled and we continue to receive resumes. The screening committee of Mister Tom Plouffe and myself evaluated each resume and cut it out. In January two, two thousand twenty-three, we interviewed two candidates. The candidates were questioned with regards to their qualifications qualifications that related to the job description. After the interviews, the candidates were given a written test and had several themes on skill assessments. Each candidate had, had said during the interview that they could perform the various functions required in the job description. The purpose of the written test and the skills assessment was to test accuracy of candidates' assertions, assertions, and guidance skills. The candidates were given written tests, compromise, and practical questions. The candidates were also asked to join some carpe diem, patch a hole in the wall, and to complete a wiring exercise. These tests were uh proctored by the members of the maintenance department. After the results of the interviews and the tests were compiled, we agreed that Daniel Spillane of West Bridgewater should be recommended to fill the maintenance mechanic aid position. Mister Spillane worked for the Brockton School for many years and left for a better position at the West Bridgewater School. He's a Brockton High School graduate, and family massive Soviet community college, he's also U.S. OSHA certified. He passed his physical, and Mister Thompson of the Brockton Public Schools gave him a glowing recommendation. His resume is attached to your consideration, therefore I recommend that motion be made to appoint uh Mister Daniel Spillane of West Bridgewater to the uh position of maintenance mechanic aid effective February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, at the two thousand twenty-two step one rate of thirty dollars and ninety percent, ninety cents per hour.
If, if I could just also add, um, Mister uh Plouffe is not here today, he had a medical appointment that he could not change, he would usually uh be involved in this. There is a disclosure here, Mister Spillane is my cousin Richard's, that's where the name Richard came from, son. Um, and I, Mister uh Spillane called me and asked me if I knew anybody at the Greenham Housing Authority, there was a position for maintenance open there, and I said, well, why don't you apply in Brockton? Um, which he did, and then went through this system, so I, I want for full and clear disclosure. Uh, I do know Dan well, um, he's a good family man. Uh, he has three children, his wife is the uh principal at the uh uh East Middle School, will never get past junior high. And uh, as I said, he, he got a glowing rec- uh recommendation from Ken Thompson, who I have a great deal of respect for.
I do too. And I'm just gonna throw it in there, I just, I know him as well, from the contract negotiations. Not personally, but I knew him.
Oh, I don't.
And he was, he was a pastry chef at White's for seven years, I'll take him, yeah.
I saw that. I saw that. He make a cheese cake.
We need a motion and a second, item nineteen.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Ernest Pettifat, seconded by Commissioner Cal Roberts. Motion is to appoint Daniel Spillane of Westbridge Automatt to the position of maintenance mechanic aid effective February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. At the twenty twenty-two step one rate of thirty dollars and ninety cents per hour. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Aaron Dunn, roll call Mister Tebow?
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat?
Yes.
And Mister Chairman?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously.
Yes.
Daniel, normally during COVID, we couldn't have anybody here, everybody was on the screen.
Yep.
We couldn't shake their hand or say anything, come on up and so I can shake your hand.
All right.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Welcome aboard, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Take a look at them so I can see your face.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Just one thing here. It's a little speech that I have, I tell everybody that whether they're transferring to another job or not. But our residents, we treat them as number one.
Absolutely.
In other words, if you run into one, and one, somebody gives you a hard time, just think of it as they having a bad day.
Right.
Turn it in here, do not snap back at them.
Absolutely.
Without them, we don't need you, or they don't need me, we have to have the residents.
Absolutely, understood, thank you. I know I will. I, I agree.
I, I know you will hate to leave, but could you uh bring him over to Donna? Donna leaves at three thirty and uh so you can get some of your stuff done for your
Okay.
employment, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're getting like Tom Plouffe, right, so I'm right on you.
Well, they, they, they have to get paperwork done and
Okay.
And I asked Nancy to sit in, and she hates this.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Item twenty. Approval of amendments to the Brockton Housing Authority Section Eight Administrative Plan, exhibit Q in your packet. Mister Tebow?
We brought the big guns in for this, if I could ask uh Miss Kuslane Barney, um, and I don't know if Bruner is gonna participate, but if you could step, step up and address the board, please.
Don't tell me you're gonna read that whole book. Wow, we'll be here forever.
Good afternoon, members of the board, I'm gonna present Una Campbell, who's gonna be presenting the new revision to the admin plan. Uh, regarding M T W's and each others, so.
And I want, we, we use the acronym M T W, and we're not used to, it's moving to work, that's a new designation we have uh by HUD, moving to work.
Don't be nervous, we'll keep.
You're on TV.
Good afternoon, board members, um, the Brockton Housing Authority was among one of the twenty-nine agencies across the United States that was selected to be to take part in the Moving to Work M T W demonstration program. We were chosen because of our excellent work and mission to be even more effective in supporting low-income individuals and families. And I am pleased to announce today that we've been officially recognized as an M T W agency as of January first, two thousand twenty-three. Hi, the Brockton Housing Authority subscribes to a service provided by Neil McKay, who is a leader in the section industry to provide us updates to the HUD's ever-changing regulations. Over the last year, there have been significant adjustments made. Uh, we therefore made revision to Section Eight Admin Plans where flexible changes in the federal regulations, and this is the admin plan. Additionally, our M T W waivers were approved by HUD as part of the annual plan approved by you. Uh, we need to incorporate those provisions in our admin plan, usually what we do. The highlights of the changes include the following. The M T W changes were, uh, we will now be using the payment finger at between eighty to hundred fifty percent of the F M R for the Brockton area, small area F M R. And also the landlord vacancy payments. Um, one year in exclusion for families voluntarily using the welfare program, and it's also similar to our earned income disallowing program which we call E I D. Uh, other changes, the new rules on section ten tenants in four-fold buildings. Um, made changes to our homeownership program when it comes to calculations. Um, we made changes to allow more remote briefings and hearing on because of COVID. Um, and then also two chapters on mainstream and the Rad voucher. We are asking Board of Commissioners to adopt the Section Eight Admin Plan as amended as of February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three.
There you go. Very nice, if, if I could add on to that, if you can see the body of that, there's some technical changes we have to do. But the majority of the uh changes is to help our people move up, buy homes, get better jobs. A transition from welfare to work, uh, which is what the um, the designation is all about.
So we still have the M T W waivers?
So there's, um, I don't know, would you want to answer it?
Yeah, what, what do we, we have different waivers, which one are you referring to, um? We have waivers, we have the small F M R waivers, we have the landlord vacancy, and then we have also the, the welfare to work, so in other words, if someone is on welfare and we encourage them to find a, a job, what we'll do, we will waive, no, not we will, we're not gonna waive, we're excluding, we'll exclude the, the income, the earned income, and use the, the tenant income as the base, so in other words, we'll give them a bond one for one year to give it some type of incentive to continue to work.
That's the technical term, bond one? But it, it, um, the waivers, Janet, there are seventy approved waivers by HUD, seventy-something. We've chosen three, we will uh each year adopt more that allow us to work and be flexible with our residents, but uh, we, it's strongly recommended by the Moving to Work Collaborative that you, you do this slowly, step by step.
Right.
Uh, so they should do it the right way.
We need a motion and a second, item twenty.
That's good.
So moved. Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trask, seconded by Commissioner Cal Roberts. Motion is to approve the Brockton Housing Authority Section Eight Administrative Plan as amended, effective February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. That's today. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Aaron Dunn, roll call Mister Tebow?
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat?
Yes.
And Mister Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item twenty-one, approval of amendment to the Brockton Housing Authority Parking and Towing Policy, exhibit R in your packet. Mister Tebow?
Uh, the authority received a request from a resident uh as a reasonable accommodation to be able to leave his pocket, his scooter in a parking space, because he needed the scooter to get to the car, once he got in the car, he had no place to put the scooter. Um, and which ended up being uh difficult for the authority and for the resident. So we have amended our parking policy to recognize that, uh, and we're adding this language. When circumstances required, there will be designated parking for residents with motorized scooters who are required to leave the scooter in the spot while they are operating a motor vehicle. Residents requiring these spots will request a spot at the manager's office, and a man, and the manager will keep a list. Uh, so it's uh, these scooters have become quite um prevalent, and where they go when people get in cars has become an issue.
We need a motion and a second, item twenty-one.
Is this related to one building?
Yes, it is, we had, the request was at the Bel Air High Rise, but it would apply to all of our buildings. If you are more, if you have the funds, you've probably seen cars, they have the adaptation on it where they can attach the scooter to the back. And then they ride around with it there, and then they can take it on and off. That, you know, but that that's quite expensive.
Where they put their scooters when they're when they come in with the car?
They leave the, what would happen is they would leave the scooter in the parking spot. Get in the car, leave. When they come back in, they would move the scooter to park there. Basically, the scooter would take up the parking spot while they were away.
Okay.
Still need a motion and a second, Bernie.
Is there a liability on us as far as insurance go?
There is not. In fact, there's a liability on us for not doing it. This is something that we have engaged, been engaged for by the Department of Fair Housing. That's not what they, by Fair Housing, we have walked through that program, and this was the agreement that we we came up with.
Okay, now Thomas, these, the electric scooters that the people ride in?
Yes.
Okay. How about people who have, who drive in electric wheelchairs?
That would probably apply also. We don't, it's not a big population because most people, you know, if they're in an electric wheelchair, they can't drive. They use that electric wheelchair and they will go dial a battle. They'll use that through the streets and the sidewalks. Most people do that with their scooters. This is not, I don't think it's a something we're gonna see a lot of. And they will, you will have to provide medical documentation that the scooter is required for your disability.
Okay, okay. Okay.
A second from somebody?
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Ernest Pettifat, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is to approve the amendment to the Brockton Housing Authority Parking and Towing Policy to create motorized scooter parking on a NASNAD basis. Any questions? Or any other questions or discussion? On item twenty-one? Item twenty, sorry.
We have an overabundance of motorized scooters on my street.
Yes, they are very prevalent. And again, and a lot, number of people use the motorized scooters out of convenience, not medical need. This would be for people with medical need.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Yep.
Any other questions or discussion? Roll call to people?
I'll say so.
Yeah.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Mr. Pettifat, Commissioner Pettifat.
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously.
Oh, and this one, on twenty-one?
Yeah.
Ernie Pettifat and Janet Trask, second.
Okay, I I remember, I said it, but I didn't.
You said it, yeah.
Motion carries unanimously. Item twenty-two, award of contract, fire alarm maintenance repairs and testing. Exhibit S in your packet. Mr. Tebow?
We have the Mr. Barry show, but we have the Mr. The Christopher show.
You're getting good at it, pretty.
So this contract is for the fire alarm maintenance repairs and testing service. Between January twenty-fourth and January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, the Brockton Housing Authority advertised for qualified fire alarm maintenance repairs and testing vendors from Carby's, the State Quits and Services, Fullerton, and our local booth bakery. This business opportunity was posted in the Man City Tower building. Seventy-eight vendors were invited by email through Spartan Divis. Solicitation was posted in the D J website, January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, for the public to view and download. A preview, pre-bid meeting was held on February seventh, two thousand twenty-three, in the Raffin Conference Room. Two companies attended the pre-bid meeting when we discussed the technical and administrative requirements of the service. On February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, submission deadline, we received three visits showing the half-quit balance sheet. One company was unfortunately disqualified for non-compliance with the requirement. The low and responsive bid was Pine Ridge Technologies of North Reading, Massachusetts. References were checked, including the vendor's exclusion page of the federal government, SAM dot gov. No negative references were received. They recommend that a motion be made toward the contract of fire sprinkler maintenance repairs for three years to Pine Ridge Technologies of North Reading, Massachusetts for a base price of fourteen thousand, five oh five and the emergency hourly rate of up to two hundred ninety-eight dollars.
We need a motion and a second. Item twenty-two.
So moved.
Carol, cut the, we need a second. A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Ernest Pettifat. Motion is to award a three-year contract for fire alarm maintenance, repairs and testing to Pine Ridge Technologies Incorporated of North Reading, Mass. for the base price of fourteen thousand, five hundred and five thousand dollars. And an emergency hourly rate of up to two hundred ninety-eight dollars as presented. And I might add, it's a little bit. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask. You're on mute, Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Motion carries unanimously. Item twenty-three, old business. Any old business? Hearing none. Item twenty-four, new business. Any new business? Hearing none. Item twenty-five, before, I just wanted it's Jade DeGrace, I didn't mention your last name, Jade. Jade DeGrace for the mayor's office is present as well.
We've seen him.
Can you see him on that end?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we can see.
I didn't know, I didn't know that, sorry. I thought you couldn't see him. I thought you could see here only.
No.
They're in the little small box up top.
Yeah, we'd see everybody.
Get out of that small box, Jay. We need a motion and a second, and don't leave yet, because we're gonna do a roll call on item twenty-five adjournment. By anybody?
Don't.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trask, seconded by Commissioner Carol Roberts. And that motion is to adjourn. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
No. Ernie, Tom is in your seat over there.
Your dirty feelings. I am. I came to the other side so I could see you.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You approve of that?
You look good down there.
Help him trapped in this little box.
Are we in a little box too?
Have a good weekend, guys. Oh, okay, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, meeting adjourned.
Have a great one.
Yes, good weekend, everybody.
Ladies, thank you very much for coming. I appreciate that.